There's nothing happened. A limb fell. They moved it off the sidewalk on the south side of the house. They just moved it. Another limb fell, stayed in the street. I think she's standing in her yard watching me do it. Thought she was going to call the police. Yeah, they don't care.
Yeah. I told you, you have electricity at home.
Yeah, you told me that.
That's all. That's all the news and information I have.
But you got three of them.
Good evening. The council meeting of April 17 will come to order. Good evening. I would ask that all in attendance turn off our silence, your electronic devices, and if you would please stand to honor God and country. As we prepare to go to prayer this evening, thought it would be appropriate to honor a champion of children this evening, Ms. Larice Hashem. And we will be lifting a prayer this evening for all children. Father God, we pray for children. Those who put chocolate fingers on the new couch, who love to be tickled, who stomp in puddles and ruin their new pants, who sneak popsicles before supper and who can never find their shoes. But Lord, we also pray for those who stare at strangers from behind barbed wire, who can't skip down the street in a new pair of Reeboks, who never played one potato, two potato, who've never seen circus animals and who live in X-rated worlds. We pray for children who sleep with the dog and bury the goldfish, who hug us quickly and forget their lunch money, who cover themselves with Band-Aids and sing off key, who squeeze toothpaste all over the sink and who slurp their chicken noodle soup. And Lord, we pray for those whose moms have never baked brownies, who have no blanket to drag behind them, who can't find any bread to steal, who don't have rooms to clean, whose monsters are real. We pray too, Lord, for children who spend all their allowance before Tuesday, who throw tantrums in the grocery store, who shove dirty clothes under the bed, who squirm in church or temple and scream in the phone, those whose tears can make us laugh and whose smiles can make us cry. And dear Lord, we pray for those whose nightmares come in the daytime, who have never been to the dentist, who aren't spoiled by a grandma, who go to bed hungry and cry themselves to sleep, who move and exist but will never have a life. And most of all, Lord, for children who want to be carried and for those who must, for those we never give up on and for those who don't get a second chance, for those we smother with love and for those who will grab the hand of anyone kind enough to offer it. We pray and we thank God for community champions who invest their time, their talents, and their treasures in our children. Amen. We will now pledge to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If there are persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, forms are available in the back of the room and may be turned into our city clerk to the right. First order of business this evening, if Police Chief Ken Albano and Larice Hashem would approach the podium in recognition of a naming-level donor for the Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club. Chief Albano, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. As you know, our efforts to establish a Boys and Girls Club presence in the city of Temple Terrace have been ongoing for more than five years. And throughout this time, I have shared the ever-present need for a club in Temple Terrace with as many individuals, corporate executives, local business leaders, and many of our own residents. We have garnered the support of many, including this council. The skepticism of some persevered in the face of more than a few disappointments along the way, but through it all remained faithfully committed in our efforts to bring the kind of programming, mentorship opportunities to the underserved youth in the greater Temple Terrace area that I truly believe only a Boys and Girls Club can deliver. It has been more than a year ago now that I first had the honor of meeting Ms. Hashem. I was attending a Boys and Girls Club event and later learned that she had recently committed to fully funding her first Boys and Girls Club, the Sam and Larice Hashem Foundation Club at Town and Country Park. After being introduced and having casual conversation about the efforts of the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay and what great work that they do, I went on my way. I went to go sit down and somebody tapped me on the shoulder, and it was Ms. Hashem. She asked me a few more questions about the Temple Terrace efforts, and she told me that she didn't know when and she didn't know how, but that God had placed it on her heart that she was going to help us in Temple Terrace some way. And since then, I've occasionally stayed in contact with her and invited her and updated her on progress here in Temple Terrace. I even invited her to Farm Night. And during that conversation, she asked me about the status of our club. And I told her there's been some ups and downs and some donations and where we stood. And she said, well, can I come see your club? And I said, sure, you can come see the club. When would you like to? She said, can we see it tomorrow? So I made a call and arranged for that, and I met Ms. Hashem the very next day. We walked into the facility, we walked around, we went out and looked at the spaciousness of the grounds, and she came back inside and she told me that she was going to make this happen, that Temple Terrace would have a Boys and Girls Club. She is very passionate, and you got me all worked up already with your prayer. But Larice and her dearly departed husband, Sam, shared a dream. And that dream was to establish a foundation for higher education in order to help provide educational opportunities for youth that might otherwise not have a chance to fully reach their highest potential. Since Sam's passing back in March of 2016, the focus of that dream manifested itself in her support of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Tampa Bay. No words I could ever use would be able to fully express how truly blessed I feel to have Larice Hashem as my friend and our naming-level partner in this endeavor. This wonderful lady has committed $500,000 in order to ensure the establishment of her second club. And I want to make something very clear. Larice doesn't give out of an overabundance of wealth. This lady gives sacrificially, humbly, with a servant's heart. She doesn't simply offer us a check, but rather her ongoing presence, her heartfelt prayers of support of a true partner in this endeavor. She doesn't live in Temple Terrace and probably never will, but she most assuredly now and forever is a part of our history and a part of the Temple Terrace family. With that, Madam Mayor, it is my great honor to present to you my friend and our naming-level partner, Ms. Larice Hashem, and yield the floor to you for your comments and presentation.
Ms. Hashem, it is truly an honor to welcome you to Temple Terrace. Our community is so very appreciative for your most generous gift. And we present a certificate of appreciation to you that reads, Ms. Larice Hashem, in appreciation of Larice Hashem's sincere and heartfelt devotion to the underserved youth of the greater Temple Terrace area, your willingness to step forward as the naming-level donor for the Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club has ensured that our shared dream of changing the face of tomorrow by investing in the hearts and minds of our youth today will become a reality in Temple Terrace. It is awarded this 17th day of April 2018. And Ms. Hashem, you are indeed a champion in Temple Terrace, and we celebrate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so honored to be here tonight and grateful to be acknowledged by the mayor and the city council. Thank you for that. It was unexpected, and I'm humbled by it. I would just like to say the reason for my participation with the Boys and Girls Club is first and foremost because of my late husband, Sam Hashem. Everything I do today is to honor him and his memory. He has always been concerned about those that needed assistance and families that may have been struggling with young children. He believed in helping children get an education so they could succeed in life. As we all know, tomorrow's, actually today's, demands bright, hard-working individuals to solve the problems of today and the future. And the only way to create those individuals is by acting as a community to support our schools, our teachers, and the countless of other people that the children depend on for education. The Boys and Girls Club gives these children the safety net, the building blocks, the stepping stones to reach those goals. And as much as I appreciate this recognition, and I'm grateful for it, the greatest reward for me is the importance of educating the children, keeping them safe so they could have that opportunity to allow them to succeed in this world of ours. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hashem. And I believe there are just a few more individuals Chief would like to...
Yes, ma'am. Just to commemorate this, I would really appreciate just a moment to take one photo with you in the background and our kids from our summer camp and Ms. Hashem here. That would be really great. We could hang it in the club. I think it would be an awesome thing.
Absolutely.
So if you guys, if you young adults, not kids, I said the wrong thing again. If you young adults would come forward, I would appreciate it, please.
And coming forward are some of our Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club members.
That's right.
I was going to say, where did you go?
But did you want us to stand?
Yes. Maybe you would around.
All right, one, two, three. Let's take a couple. And one more. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
And I know Chief Albano is not going too far because next is the Police Department Civilian of the Year Award. If Police Chief Albano and Patrick Brown would please approach the podium. The Temple Terrace Police Department 2017 Civilian of the Year is Patrick Brown. CSO Patrick Brown has contributed tremendously to the success of the Temple Terrace Police Department throughout the year. CSO Brown started his career with the Police Department on 10/24/2016. His initial duty responsibilities at that time were to assist the crime prevention officer on several of her day-to-day duties. During 2017, CSO Brown has taken on several additional responsibilities, none with complaint. CSO Brown has taken the lead with organizing and coordinating Coffee with a Cop. CSO Brown has assumed duties as the department's quartermaster where he is responsible for the ordering inventory of all of our police duty equipment. CSO Brown is also responsible for the Crime Watch Newsletter and the Weekly Crime Map, which he completes flawlessly week in and week out. CSO Brown also took on the added responsibilities of managing the department's trespass program, disseminating the media log on social media, and coordinating, again, the Coffee with a Cop. CSO Brown has played a vital role during the preparation for Hurricane Irma. He ensured the entire fleet of police vehicles was fueled, provided traffic control at the sandbag distribution site, and helped with the setup of an alternate distribution area. This is just one example of him serving the citizens of Temple Terrace in a great time of need. We could go on and on about the contributions of CSO Brown made during 2017. However, his most valuable contribution is his acceptance of every task given to him with a smile on his face, his willingness to take on more responsibility for the good of the department and the city, and the level of professionalism he displays each and every day. For these reasons, Patrick Brown is the Temple Terrace Police Department Civilian of the Chief, Patrick, would you like to say a few words?
I didn't know I would be asked to speak, but I will say thank you to Chief, to my direct supervisor, Patty Stanton, my mentor and for this job friend, Stephanie Huertas. Thank you for this employment opportunity. I've enjoyed it very much in the past. I think it's been a year and a half now, and I plan on continuing to enjoy it for a much longer time. Not only that, I am also a citizen of the city as well, not only an employee. So it's always been a goal of mine to make it as better as possible. My role in that is to support the police officers in any means necessary. So I will always do my best to fulfill that duty.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
of the Year Award. Along with Chief, I would ask the following officers to join him. Communication Supervisor Kenneth Stanton, Senior Communications Officer Leslie Arnold, Senior Communications Officer Stephanie Hendricks, Senior Communications Officer Velva Johnson-Stacy, Senior Communications Officer Monica Bateman, Communications Officer Anilia Hasek, I hope I didn't mess up that name, Communications Officer Brooke McGorick, Communications Officer Venice Chico Amonte, and Communications Officer Courtney Anderson.
During FY 2016-2017 and continuing to this day, the members of the Temple Terrace Police Department Communications Unit have continuously demonstrated performance above and beyond their normal duties with excellence and with commitment. Each member of this unit, while constantly working shorthanded while implementing a new CAD system on the heels of a new radio system, consistently exemplified a positive image of the Police Department and community to include professionalism, sustained work ethic, personal conduct, ethics, leadership, vision, communication, and compassion. During the past year, the unit handled 54,219 non-emergency phone calls, 3,411 fire incidents, 27,399 police incidents, 17,255 911 phone calls, 555 walk-ups, completed 10,566 FCIC queries and entries, handled 2,206 EMD calls while answering 100% of all 911 calls within 10 seconds. They reduced the dispatch time for in-progress calls from 1 minute 30 seconds in 2016 to 1 minute 5 seconds this year. The unit reduced the average time for processing EMD calls from 1 minute 53 seconds to 1 minute 43 seconds. Each and every member of the unit has worked diligently, oftentimes behind the scenes, maintaining that first line of protection for our officers and the members of our community they are sworn to serve. For their collective and individual efforts, these officers are awarded the 2017 Communications Officer of the Year. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, my supervisor, Cheryl Singleton, wanted to be here, but she's in the back room. She spoke last time we were here. And I work with a great group of ladies. I can't say that anymore because we just hired a man. So, but they are the reason why the unit is as good as they are. And I'm not on the radio a lot, so that's why the stats are pretty good. But every single one of them are great. And Anella Hasek is no longer Anella Hasek. She's Anella Dismaris now. She just got married.
Congratulations.
So anyway, thank you very much. We work diligently. We work very hard for these stats and what we do. And we're here to serve, and we love it. So thank you.
That's impressive.
This is the most interactive we've been in a long time.
Planning Manager Ed McKinney and Clarence Ing will be making the presentation. Gentlemen.
Tough act to follow, isn't it?
That's a really tough act to follow. They're measured by success in seconds. I'm measured by success in years, decades, generations.
Would you feel more comfortable if we had Chief Albano come up again?
I would really like that.
One more time.
I think that, yeah, I would really like that. I don't know if my presentation, is it going to pop up automatically?
There we go.
Okay, all right. Wow, okay. I will do the best I can to try to wow you as much as those folks. But as the mayor said, I'm Ed McKinney. I'm the Planning and Environmental Administrator for the District 7 Department of Transportation Office. And first of all, thank you for allowing us to come here and present to you what we're doing as part of Tampa Bay Next. And this is an exciting time in our region because we're talking about so many things as it relates to transportation. If you recall, as Councilman Chalour can recall, when we were talking about TBX, I would have come to you and talked to you about an interstate project. I would have come to you and talked about how we're widening the interstate, how we're impacting communities, and how that's a good thing for transportation, maybe not such a good thing for communities and the people that were impacted. What's exciting about this conversation now is we're talking about so many other things. We're talking about transit. We're talking about connectivity. We're talking about multimode solutions to moving people through our region that aren't just impacting communities in a negative way, but they're impacting communities in a positive way, in a way that allows them to redevelop, to revitalize, to get people excited about living in areas that otherwise, and maybe in the past, they weren't too excited about living in. So this is a really exciting time to be part of this conversation, to be part of this region. And I'm going to share with you just a small little bit of what we're doing with Tampa Bay Next, but it's an important part, how Temple Terrace is part of this conversation. And halfway through my presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Clarence Ing, who's going to talk to you a little bit more specifically about some things going on up here. So what are we trying to do with Tampa Bay Next? As I said, it's not just looking at a single solution, road widening. We realize that we cannot continue the same solutions. As I say back in the office, we have a perfect way of solving all of our problems. It sits on a shelf. It's called a design manual. All you got to do is look at volumes, pull this design manual, open it to page X, and it tells you how to fix the problem, how many lanes you need, how wide the road's got to be. And then you just go, you give it to a consultant, he goes, designs it, and then you go out to the community and say, I fixed your problem. Well, now we're looking at other things. We still have to fix those problems. We still have to deal with traffic operations, how these roads work together. We got to deal with congestion. We're in a growing region. That's not going away. But we also have to figure a way, how do we bring in driver choice into this conversation? So I'm going to walk through this really quickly, and I'll be happy to entertain questions at the conclusion of Clarence's presentation. But as I mentioned, and we're still going through several studies, one being the Downtown Interchange Study, we're going through what's called a supplemental environmental impact statement, which is the most rigorous form of the National Environmental Policy Act, which requires us to look at impacts of decisions that governments make and what their impacts are to the community, the social economic, the social impacts and cultural impacts of these decisions. And so we're going through that process now. We're also looking at I-275 roughly from MLK going north to the Beers area. So these things are still ongoing. We're still evaluating those projects, but we're also incorporating some new and exciting things. We're looking at regional express lanes. If you remember on the TBX conversation, we talked about express lanes on I-275, possibly needing to widen portions of that as it connects into the downtown interchange. We've since changed that direction. We're no longer considering express lanes on I-275 north of the interchange. We've moved the express lanes over to I-75. And that's going to come, and I'm going to explain a little bit about why that's important to Temple Terrace here in a second. But that's been a major shift. The community has asked us, hey, why aren't we looking at a corridor that's a little bit more rural, that has more opportunities for roadway expansion that doesn't impact communities? And that's why we're looking at I-275. But it's more than just looking at interstates. We're looking at an approach of how we can move people, and I'm going to focus more on this area here, and I'm going to kind of walk through some of these things. We're undergoing a Fowler, what we call a Fowler, I guess it would be kind of a Fowler connectivity study. Basically, is we're looking at how do we connect the regional transit study, which I'll talk about in a second, with downtown. So if we were to have a regional connection along I-275 or even the CSX line, how would that connect to downtown? And how would that connect to this area, which is a heavy, which is a large corridor for employment? And so how would we do that? So we're undergoing a study along Fowler Avenue. Where would we put an intermodal center? Would it be the University Mall area? Would it be more west, closer to I-275? And then how would that connect to the university, possibly Temple Terrace and other areas? And so we're going through that study right now. We're looking at a USF circulator, and Clarence is going to come up and talk about that in a little bit. I don't want to go into too much detail and still only into his presentation, but I talked about the intermodal center study. That's another study that's ongoing. So if we have the Fowler connectivity, so if we're connecting Temple Terrace, say, to I-275, how would that work? And would it be, would somebody just walk out their front door and catch a bus rapid transit or some type of transit and go directly to downtown? Probably not. They would probably not.
Just described that the area around Bruce B. Downs, north of Fowler, towards Fletcher, is where you're going, and also a little bit to the east, it's the west, you're going to have the highest concentrations of employment, population, also the transit dependent, those who don't have options, they, they will use transit as their means of, of getting around, and at times, and they're, they're obviously a little bit poorer, so their poverty levels and, and some of the other sort of demographics sort of represent it. So again, these are some of the areas that we're talking about. And again, this is just an illustration of the transit ridership. So in blue is where people actually are getting on and off, and in the sort of lime-green-yellow is actually the, the bull runner. So this is all the, the major hotspots of where people are getting on and off in terms of service. What you can see is Fowler, there, there aren't too many dots, in part because there isn't a service along Fowler right now. And so where the study, and as we're extending it, looking at providing transit, that's an opportunity what we're going to try to address. Again, in the future, it just grows, you know, greater. The last few slides I'm going to share is that we also tried to do an analysis of Fowler Avenue. Where are people coming from and going, you know, along the corridor, and how, how has that translated itself? So we broke it up into a, a bunch of different areas, and I could just sort of jump ahead and give you the, the punchline in that 20% actually are, of the movements are actually along the corridor. So 20% just stay in, in that corridor. 20% come from the, from the north, 10% from the east, includes Temple Terrace, 20% from the south, another 10% from the west. That obviously amounts to 60%, excluding that 20%, so it's 80% within a close geographic area, so 20% is obviously further, and it correlates to travel time. So that map shows you, within the green, about 15-minute drive versus 30 minutes. So the punchline there is, most everybody who's coming, working, living in this area are within a reasonable distance. So as we look at making improvements, we'll be taking that into consideration. And so last slide is just to give you a sense of where we are on the schedule. We've done the existing conditions analysis, obviously we'll do additional more as we extend the corridor, but we're in the process of, and develop concepts. So since there's nothing as a concept that we're, we had developed right now, so this is a good time for extending the corridor, and we'll be working with, obviously, stakeholders, including the city of Temple Terrace, as we move forward to really develop these concepts, vet them, and be able to put a plan together.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here this evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counsel, there, I think they're waiting to see if anybody has.
If there's any questions.
Typically during presentations, there are not.
Okay, just let them know that.
You mentioned the, the statistics about the, the vehicles traveling on that stretch of Fowler, 20% came from here, 10% came from, how do you know the origin and the destination of, of all these vehicles traveling down Fowler?
So, so there are different methods. We used one method that was to look at, it's streetlight data. So what, what it does is that, we all have cellphones, smartphones and GPS. What they do is they actually track your destinations. So we, yeah, here.
Facebook.
Facebook, I mean, you know, and how, what it does is that they, they use your cellphone pinging. So they'll triangulate you, they'll say that you start here and end here, you know, all the, let's not get into sort of data privacy issues, but that's really what it comes from. And what we do is we do that analysis of those origin destinations, and they're all aggregated. There are different methods to do that, and, but that's the.
It's like Waze.
It's like Waze, and that's, exactly. When you, when you hit, accept, you know, I accept to use your app and, you know, be able to provide locations, that's what it does.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Counsel, there is a vacancy for an alternate member on the municipal code enforcement board. The city received one application from Brian Hubert. If the candidate is here and would like to address counsel. I don't see him here this evening. I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Hubert as an alternate member of the municipal code enforcement board, from the period of April 17, 2018, until March 7, 2020. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Brian Hubert as an alternate to the code board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Counsel, if the minutes of the April 3 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Councilman Boss. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. Individual members of the public who are present in the audience may designate in writing a representative to speak on their behalf, not extended beyond a 10-minute time period. As speakers come to the podium, we'd ask you to please state your name and your city of residence. During public comments on items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors who are present in the room do make note of these items. During the city manager's report later in the agenda, Mr. Stevenson may comment on the items directly, or where further research is necessary, he or he will assign staff to reach back to our residents. We want to ensure residents that all of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on. First this evening, Mr. John Noonan.
Hi, Madam Mayor, John Noonan, 305 South Glen Arvin Avenue, here in Temple Terrace. I don't know that I can ask the government of the city of Temple Terrace to do anything about my concerns today, but perhaps some of you as individuals would be interested in lending support to some of the small businesses that are already established in the redevelopment area. I know you want new businesses to come in, but you can't allow the existing businesses to disappear either. The Taekwondo Center, for example, vacated part of the redevelopment center because of rents raising. I learned from a very nice conversation I had with the city manager yesterday, that the little barber is under pressure to pay higher rents there. I had another conversation with the owner of the Sing Ha Vietnamese, the wife owner, husband and wife team, about their rents and their problems with the manager, who allows vagrants to occupy the halls of that building overnight, and she's faced with taking out the garbage and cleaning up the urine. As I said, I don't think there's anything you can do as a government about this, but some of you have wonderful connections in the community, perhaps through the Chamber of Commerce. They seem to be all of a sudden interested in getting involved in redevelopment. Maybe they could help these people do some of this. And one of the reasons I, I make this plea is because yesterday, when I was having lunch in the Vietnamese restaurant there, an obstreperous customer had to be ejected, and he came back in threatening to blow the place up. He was going to return and blow the place up. I finished my lunch quickly, I tell you. And he is obviously one of those people that you see so frequently in that area of the redevelopment downtown. I think maybe some additional police presence is needed there, but also I think some of you, particularly you, Madam Mayor, you, you have experience in, in psychology. Some of these people need help. They, they live down by the river, they're either veterans, or drug addicts, or alcoholics. They filter into the redevelopment area during the day. Maybe we need to get, I don't know, Metropolitan Ministries, or Project Hope, or some non-governmental organization to help these people. They're not, they're not as lovable as children, clearly, but I think they are both a discouragement to business and deserving of help themselves. Thank you.
Next, continuing, an MCEB lien reduction petition for 5205 East 131st Avenue. Code Compliance Director Tom Barone will present the case. Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Tom Barone. Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Tom Barone, Code Compliance. At the March 14, 2018, meeting at the Municipal Code Enforcement Board, the Board considered the lien reduction related to MCEB case number 16-2515, and case number 17-0869. Property located at 5205 East 131st Avenue. City versus NCRC Housing Rehab Fund LLC for code ordinance violations of damaged exterior walls, damaged window and door. The, the Board considered and recommend by a six-to-one vote that the $21,600 lien in both cases on the property be reduced to the matrix calculation of $12,483, contingent upon the fine being paid within 30 days of the council's decision, or it would be revert to the original amount of the lien. If counsel has any questions for city staff, or for the Chairman of the Code Enforcement Board, Richard Schmidt, we'd be happy to answer them.
I would ask if representatives from NCRC Housing Rehab Fund LLC would like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members, appreciate your, your time and attention. I'll try to be brief. Apologize in advance for the quality of my voice. I'm struggling with a bit of a cold. NCRC Housing Rehab Fund is.
Can I get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Edward Gorman, G-O-R-M-A-N, and I'm the Managing Director of this fund. My, my home is in Silver Spring, Maryland. The fund is located in Washington, DC. This fund is a mission fund. It's an impact investment fund. It was created by NCRC, which is a 501(c)(3) public charity, to create homeownership opportunities for low and moderate income people, and in low and moderate income neighborhoods of both. We began this fund in 2015, and Tampa, Pinellas, and Hillsborough County is the second place that we came to, to institute this mission. This is an organization that's been devoted for 27 years to the Community Reinvestment Act, which is a statute that promotes investment in low and moderate income communities. And we have joused with banks occasionally, we also work with banks, and in this case, we work with banks, who invest in this fund, so that we can invest in houses that we can turn towards homeownership. We believe strongly that the best hope that low and moderate income families have is to, to own a home, so they don't have to rent, be subjected to rental increases, and know what their stable housing costs are going to be. We don't give these homes away. This is not done with government money, this is done with private investment. And we're the first nonprofit of its kind in the country to do this. It's a national fund in that sense, it's not simply a little bit of money. We have to pay the money back, let me be clear. This is not grant money, it's not government money. Let me get to the point of, of this particular house. And let me start by apologizing. We should never have had what happened here happen here. We hired a third-party asset manager to do this work, and they did a very poor job of it. For that, we apologize. We have, from this experience and several others, dismissed that third-party asset manager, and now we're building our own teams, made up of local people, to do this work. And so there'll be local realtors, there's local contractors, everybody is local in this project, and it'll be managed locally. So this won't happen again. I come down here, number one, to say I'm sorry that this happened, and number two, to say that we're already taking, in this particular case, a $23,000 loss on this house. The contractor that we were told that we needed to make right with, before we could continue to do the work and get the permit to do the work and complete it, left, absconded. We couldn't find him. I believe, it was at least my understanding, that Temple Terrace wanted us to prove that we had made right with this contractor before we could pull a permit again and complete the work, but we couldn't find the contractor. So we were delayed well over 60 days, just trying to find the contractor, which cost us $100 a day, I think, just for that. So this is a project that I feel, I mean, having been one of the architects of this thing, we, you know, we take this work really seriously. We take the mission seriously. And the banks that invest in us expect us to return the funds, but also to produce for them homes that people can live in comfortably, happily. We do, you know, top level, as much as we can put into a house, we do it, so that the people who come in don't get a shoddy house. So this is particularly embarrassing. So I come before you to say I'm sorry, and also to say, please consider further reducing this fine, because every dollar we spend on a fine is a dollar we can't put into a house. And I can tell you that just the loss on this house alone will take us eight homes to make up. So would appreciate your considering further reducing the fine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have one member of the public who would like to speak to this, Ms. Jan Tumbleson.
Jan Tumbleson, I'm a resident of Temple Terrace, Madam Mayor, Counsel. I appreciate you hearing from me. I appreciate the top level and the integrity of this project and the developer. But as I said, it is not the city, nor the neighborhood's problem, that NCRC cannot get their act together with the contractor. It is not a local person that bought this house, but a multimillion-dollar corporation that's behind all this. So there's pieces in place to run these things. It is not the city's fault that NCRC hasn't hired the right people to run the projects. My opinion would be leave the lien as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbleson. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, if, if counsel determines the lien reduction that was recommended by city staff of going from $21,600 to $12,483, if paid within 30 days is appropriate, I would entertain a motion to approve the lien reduction in case numbers 16-2515 and 17-0869, City versus NCRC Housing Rehab Fund LLC, for the property located at 5205 East 131st Avenue. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that in the cases of 16-2515 and 17-0869, that the lien amount of $21,600 be reduced to $12,483, and paid within 30 days, or the fine reverts back to the original amount of $21,600.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask all to signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, the consent agenda, a resolution approving a historic challenge grant award agreement. City Manager Stevenson will explain the item listed on the consent agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Counsel. Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club has applied for a county, to the county, for a Hillsborough County Challenge Grant for the purpose of making improvements to the golf course property. Temple Terrace, Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club apparently has qualified for this matching grant program, first phase of which consists of upgrading the fairways and installing a new irrigation system for the front nine holes. First phase of the project will be completed by December of this year. It costs $59,624. At the regular meeting of August 3 of 2016, Board of County Commissioners approved Temple Terrace Country Club's challenge grant application, and Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club was awarded a matching grant of up to $25,000. Pursuant to the terms of the agreement, the $25,000 grant will be distributed to Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club on a reimbursement basis only, so that only authorized cash expenditures will be reimbursed. As owner of the property, the city of Temple Terrace has party to the agreement only in authorizing Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club to make the improvements that described in the grant application to the property. The city is in, in no way liable for any portion of the matching grants, funds, nor labor associated with the award or the project. Attached to the agenda this evening is a resolution authorizing execution of the application as the legal property owner. The staff recommends the support of the country club in making these out, these outlined improvements. We'll have to execute this agreement, the county is asking for, again, just our authorization to allow them to make improvements to the property, so.
Thank you, City Manager Stevenson. I would ask if there are members of the public wishing to address counsel on the item on the consent agenda. Seeing none, if the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the item on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Pagorley.
Mr. Nertney is here, so otherwise I'd be quiet. I just want to commend them for thinking outside the box, and going, and going after this, this money, and I'm sure it'll go to good use. Thank you.
Council, Councilman Boss.
And I just have one comment, because it was brought up about completion date of December 31, 2018. I know this grant was originally applied for in 2016, so I think that, that's probably a pushback date from that. That's probably a date, thinking it was going to be granted back then in 2016, so it's probably going to be a little bit later, pushed back, but that would be my only comment, but I'm in support of it.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please.
I just want to just make sure that the club understands, and I'm sure you do, if there's going to be a pushback date, you need to let them, you need to let them know, because they are pretty stringent about that. I've been involved in, in grant applications before, and have seen people had the money taken away from them if they didn't meet the, those stringent dates.
Yeah, happy to address. John Nertney, 200 Inverness Avenue, for purposes of tonight. Absolutely, the county requires that we fulfill this and do this by December. We work very closely with the people there, EDC, and they're a great group. We're going to do this again, so hopefully we have the back nine to talk about next year, and they're anxious for us to, to apply again. We applied for a much larger sum, but there's only so much to go around, so they curtailed us to 25. But we'll do this part this year.
Very good.
Cool.
And again, thank you for that. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify with nay. Thank you, stands approved. We will now open the second public hearing and second reading to adopt ordinance 1450, CPA number 17-05, Ramashur Gas Station.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Mary Ann Abrahamson, city planner with the city.
One, one, one moment, please. I'd ask the city clerk to swear in all, oh no, I'm, I'm ahead of myself, you're fine. I apologize, Mary Ann.
That's fine.
We don't have, we don't have anything on this one. Thank you.
So, let's see. There should be a PowerPoint on your screen, but that's okay. The first, the first item I will be presenting to you about is CPA 1705, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Regarding 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue. This is the second public hearing and reading of this item. These two parcels were recently annexed into the cities, so this comprehensive plan amendment serves to change the future land use category from a county designation of RES 6 to a city designation of commercial. The planning commission has found this request consistent with the comprehensive plan, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 1450 for CPA 1705.
Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? We'll now close the public hearing, council discussion on this item. If the city clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1450, would entertain a motion to adopt CPA number 17-05 for Ramashur Gas Station.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the imagined 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, future land use map for two parcels of land located at the northwest corner of East Fowler Avenue and River Hills Drive, with addressable locations of 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue, consistent of approximately 1.45 plus minus acres, by changing the future land use designation on said property from Hillsborough County Residential 6 to City of Temple Terrace Commercial, TT/CPA 1705, providing for amendment of the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Is there a motion to adopt CPA 17-05?
Move to adopt CPA number 17-05.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now open the second public hearing and second reading to adopt ordinance 14449, RZP number 18-01, Ramashur Gas Station. At this point, I will ask the city clerk to swear in all persons who will be testifying, if there are any.
Does anyone else? Do you swear to tell the truth, or will you tell them the truth? Yes.
I would ask city council members to make disclosures of oral and written ex parte communications with applicant, to endorse citizens regarding this matter.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Very good. Mary Ann Abraham, Abramson, city planner, will give a brief review.
As mentioned, this is the second public hearing and reading of RZP 1801, regarding the same two parcels, 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue. This zoning reclassification serves to change the zoning from county commercial neighborhood to city commercial general. The planning commission has found this request consistent with the comprehensive plan, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 1449 for RZP 1801, with the requested waivers.
Very good, thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, is there any council discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk would read the title of ordinance 1449.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 1.45 plus minus acres of property located at the northwest corner of East Fowler Avenue and River Hills Drive, with addressable locations of 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue, from zoning classification commercial neighborhood, CN, Hillsborough County, to commercial general, CG, Temple Terrace, for RZP 1801, providing for amendment of the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt rezoning, RZP 18-01, Ramashur Gas Station. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance 1449 for RZP number 18-01.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Calling the vote, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. Next, the first public hearing and first reading to adopt ordinances 1451 and 1454, Land Development Code text amendment, ordinances regarding Section 2-1, Section 12-562, and Section 12-921. It's now open. Mary Ann Abraham, Abramson, city planner, will present.
So yes, I'm here to present TXT 1801, text amendment to the Land Development Code, first public hearing and reading. This text amendment affects three different sections in our code, Section 2-1, custodian of public records of the city. This is just to address a Scrivener's error and the correction for Florida statute number in that section. Section 12-562, inspections, it's a similar edit, it's a Scrivener's error correction for a subsection reference number. Section 12-921, off-street parking and driveway requirements. We made some clarification of language and the text formatting to, to make the whole section a little bit more understandable in regards to parking criteria and driveway standards for the city. I will say that community development met with code enforcement, we sat down and we spoke through these text changes to make sure that we were all in agreement and all on the same page, since they will be the ones enforcing this on the street. Staff recommends that council approve ordinance 1451 for Chapter 2, and ordinance 1454 for Chapter 12, for TXT 1801. I will note that the planning commission public hearing for this item is scheduled for May 14, and the city council's second hearing and reading is scheduled for June 5.
Counsel, do you have any questions, the staff? Councilman Ross.
There's a lot in this, but my question is very narrow. It involves Section 12-921.
Okay.
Which is, I'll give you a second to find it, but involves off-street parking and driveway requirements.
Sure.
My question concerns the off-street parking. The opening sentence in that section, currently, not the proposed language, the currently, the opening section, the opening sentence says, "Accept as provided in sections blah, blah, blah." All commercial vehicles. blah blah, all commercial vehicles are prohibited from parking in residentially zoned districts." That entire sentence as proposed is stricken. My question for you is, is this a substantial change in the city's ordinances, or are commercial vehicles prohibited from parking in residentially zoned districts in other sections of the city code?
You know, that is a good question. I'll have to do some research in regards to what sections of our code specifically allow or do not allow commercial vehicles to be parked in residentially zoned districts. Are you aware of specifically?
I don't know.
Okay.
Because the point in the question is, by striking that one sentence, if it doesn't, if that sentence or something equivalent doesn't exist in some other portion of the city ordinances, this is a big change. This is not something that should be buried in the minutia of a bunch of clerical, you know, wording and stuff like that. This represents a significant change, and I'm, whether it's good or bad, I don't know, but I would suspect that we would gather some significant public input on this kind of a change. I don't think that's something we should do buried in the center of a, if it is, I don't know. Maybe it's prohibited somewhere else.
Sure. Now, I see your point. I will, I will look into this to get to exactly which sections this, what this refers, I mean, I understand your point in that, you know, we don't want to strike this completely from the code. My understanding was that the following sentence, the proposed sentence, the changing of wording there made it a little bit more clear, but I guess that's not the case.
Well, but the proposed language, although it clarifies some issues, it does not do the same thing that the stricken language does. The stricken language says you can't park commercial vehicles in a neighborhood. The proposed language doesn't do anything like that. So, I don't know procedurally, Madam Mayor, what the appropriate, whether we table this, but I think this is.
I wondered if we might want to, and thank you, Councilman Ross, for bringing this up. We may perhaps want to consider postponing to a time definite, perhaps our first meeting in May, so that staff has the opportunity to make sure our language is tight and appropriate for this. So, if there, if there is an interest, I'd absolutely entertain a motion to postpone to time definite at our May 1st meeting.
I'll make the motion. Should I postpone? I'm just asking your input here, Mayor. Should I, you want to postpone all of it, or should I just pull this one? Because I, the rest of it, I didn't see anything, and I don't want to hold everything up if it's just this one. Would that be acceptable?
So this would be for ordinance 1451, I believe.
I think that's correct. 1454.
Yes. Okay. Let me see if I can get this right. Go ahead.
Mr. Ross, would you, would you express your concern here to me so that I can make sure that we get this right? I know, I can tell you this, a little bit of history here. When we changed our land development code some time ago, there was something that was stricken from, stricken from our code that we had not intended to be stricken from the code. I know that Mr. Kokowski at the time was handling this. The attempt that we're trying to do now is to take the change that was originally in our original code and put it back into the code, which is the reason for this stricken existing language, and now putting in the old language. If you look back at the old code, is what we're trying to add back into the code. But I'm not quite sure of your concern with the striking in the new language.
I'm not sure how to say it in any different words than I've already said it. If.
Well, if you could try, because I didn't understand it.
Okay. If we are changing the city's policy, if we are changing the city's policy to prohibit, that currently prohibits, commercial vehicles from being parked in a residential neighborhood, if we are changing that and that prohibition is going away, I think this item deserves more public discussion before we just decide on it. I think the public has to have an opportunity to know what we're doing and speak to that because that's a pretty big shift in city policy, if that's what we're doing. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's not what we.
No, I don't think that, no, I don't think we're trying to do that.
And if, yes, if I could.
The way the new language reads is all non-commercial vehicles may be parked, which means commercial vehicles cannot be.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
And if Code Director Tom Maroni might be able to clarify.
We'll try to reword it, but I think it says that.
What was brought to my attention by a resident was the yard parking of vehicles in the yard was extracted from the code somehow or another. And I don't, I know several years ago, about three years ago, they, Joe Damian and Mark Colley sat down and changed the codes as far as parking, and because of the crush ash fall, that was about two or three years ago. So they changed the verbiage in that. Somehow or another, the verbiage for vehicles parking in the yard was extracted from the code and was brought to my attention. So the commercial vehicle code ordinance was always in place. We weren't, that's always been in place prior to, for 10, last 10 years, that's always been in place. So, there is something as far as commercial vehicles in the city ordinance that the commercial vehicles cannot be in a residential zone. So only to unload and load cargo.
Okay. So you're assuring me that that prohibition exists somewhere else?
Yes. Yeah.
You're sure?
I'm 98% sure, sir. I know you probably want me to be 100%, but I'm.
Can we table it for a few minutes and you run up and find out the other 2%?
Okay.
I mean, I.
Madam Mayor, if I could, if we could just kind of table it, we'll straighten it all out, and then we'll bring it back.
If we could, if we could, I believe there's a motion on the table to postpone to time definite of our May 1st meeting. We have that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have that second.
My only question is, do we postpone it or do we just continue the opening, continue the public hearing to the next meeting?
The second public hearing will come before you on June 5th, so there is quite a bit of time. Planning Commission.
That's just a technical question, that's all.
Planning Commission will hear this item on May 14th, so there is some time in between now and the second hearing. If you'd like to address it, then that is at your discretion.
Call just help me out a little bit. So, it says, "Commercial vehicles restrictions in residential districts. Except as provided in subsection B of this section, all commercial vehicles, including self-propelled vehicles with or without trailers, having a weight class of one ton or more, individually or combined, and all commercial trailers are prohibited from parking in any residential zone, district, street, or lot."
What section is that?
That is 12-922, Commercial Vehicle Restrictions in Residential Districts, and that's subdivision A.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. I'm fine.
Okay. So are you withdrawing your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm sorry for the confusion.
No worries, and thank you, Councilman Ross, for ensuring that clarification. Okay, if, have you completed your presentation?
Yes.
We had that comment. Are there any other comments or questions for staff? If the city clerk would please read the ordinance of 1451.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as text 1801, providing for the correction to Florida statute reference by amending Chapter 2, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances Administration and Elections, Section 2-1 Title Custodian of Public Records of City, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve TXT number 18-01 for Section 2-1 on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on May 1st, 2018. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the ordinance.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Very good. Motion carries. If the city clerk would read the title of ordinance 1454.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as text 18-01, providing for revisions to correct and update information by amending Chapter 12, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Land Development Code, Article 9, Division 3, Bloodplane Management, Section 12-562, titled Inspections, and Division 13, Vehicular Parking, Section 12-921, titled Off-Street Parking and Driveway Requirements, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve TXT number 18-01 for Section 12-562 and Section 12-921 on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on June 5th, 2018.
Move to approve ordinance 1454.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll open up the first public hearing and first reading to adopt ordinance 1452 to correct previously adopted ordinance 1440 due to a scrivener's error, and Mary Ann Abrahamson, city planner, will present.
Thank you. So this is the last item I have to present tonight, TXT 1802. As mentioned, this correction to the previously adopted ordinance, this is the first public hearing and reading. This ordinance is to correct ordinance 1440, which was a rezoning classification 1706. It was approved on November 7th, 2017. The approved ordinance contained a spelling error of McCray Road. There was one additional C, McCray. So the proposed ordinance 1452 will replace McCray Road, one C, in all instances that McCray Road, two Cs, appears in ordinance 1440.
Does counsel have any questions? The staff?
No.
We will now close the public hearing, and if the city clerk would read ordinance 1452.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, correcting the error in spelling of McCray Road in ordinance 1440 that addressed the rezoning petition, number 17-06, adopted by city council on November 7th, 2017, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve TXT number 18-01 for Section 12-921 on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on May 1, 2018. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the ordinance 1452.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Very good. We have no carryover items from our previous meeting. Is there any new business to come before counsel? Councilman Donahue.
I had the pleasure of speaking at the first annual Community Garden Coalition as representative of the city, and I will tell you that our robust support of the community garden did not go unnoticed. When I explained, the question to me was, "How does your city support your community gardens?" When I explained that back in 2012, when a group approached then Leisure Services Director James Chambers, he worked with the group and helped them start the first garden at River Hills Park. And then that partnership has grown to include Linwood Park under the director Carl Langfield. Now, both of these gardens had the full support of our city manager and city council. This apparently is unheard of in other parts of the Bay Area. So, we were the darlings of the Community Garden Coalition, which of course made me feel wonderful, that I could be representing us, and I just wanted to let everybody know how it was received. And the second item is that I am happy to report that after Mr. Stevenson and I met with interim CEO Jeff Stewart of Hart, he has agreed that the study that they also are doing on, guess where, Fowler Avenue, that they are going to extend that study all the way to, through Temple Terrace. They, before that conversation, they were going to end at 56th Street, and now they're going to go all the way from I-75 to 275. So it will completely encompass our city, and this is not to be confused with the one that we talked about this earlier today. So just those two little bits. And then my last item is, and I hesitated to say this at the charter review workshop, but there's been so much discussion about how many initiatives or how many changes, charter changes, that are coming to the citizens to vote. And I just wondered, is it possible, should we consider not proposing the biggest item that, which is a change in our government, and holding off on that one until the next election, where there wouldn't be, you know, three pages? I think the last I heard, what did you say tonight, 17 from the state plus ours plus election in general. So I bring this to counsel to, just to consider, and if you think it's a bad idea, then I'll go ahead, but I would hate to see our city attorney go to all this work and then we find out that it's just so much that it would be denied. So I just entertain the discussion if anybody's interested. Okay.
Is there any other new business to come before counsel?
Just to make my point.
I have confidence in our citizens to go ahead and read the things that pertain directly to us. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm an inch away from the mic, so. I have confidence in our citizens to go ahead and be able to take care of issues that directly relate to us and make sure they're informed on them. We started this process a while ago. The Charter Review Committee could go ahead and come up with 17 amendments to go ahead and put on the ballot in two years. Do we keep postponing things because the state encumbers us with a difficult situation? And I have trust and confidence in our citizens, and, you know, although it's going to be problematic, it's your responsibility as a voter to go ahead and take your job seriously as a voter and make sure you do the right thing, particularly, I think, when it relates to our issues here. And they should be well-informed, and they should be knowledgeable of it. It's like voting for judges in office. Do you keep them? Do you retain them? Half the people don't know what those judges even do or say anything about them. And you'll see they win 75 to 20%, 75 to 30% all the time. So, that's the only reason I want to entertain it. We've put a lot of work into it, and I, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Boss. Is there any other new business to come before this counsel?
Yes, ma'am. I have one quick thing. I know we gave out a lot of accolades at the beginning of the meeting, but we'll give a little more. Most, probably a lot of people here attended the Relay for Life at Greco the other night. I know the mayor and several of the council were there, and I just want to commend all those involved, particularly Nicole Sauer from the clerk's office, but I don't want to start naming too many names because I'll forget somebody, but as is almost always the case, the city employees do what they do, and they do it very, very well, and it's all, divisions of the city were represented there. A lot of them are out there on their own time. They're not on the clock, and so, you know, we have about 300 employees, give or take, in this city, and they just make a tremendous impact in this city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Seeing none others, we will move to our city managers' report. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that, Andy. That was on my list of things to do, but I know that our employees love getting involved with the stuff that we do here in town. They're super to deal with. I've got just a few things to kind of bring to everybody's attention and to ask for permission from counsel for a couple of things here. Just a reminder, this Thursday, the 19th, 7 o'clock at the Country Club, we have the town hall meeting. We have somewhat of an agenda that we have tried to build for this one, unlike the other ones that we've had in the past. We would like to, again with counsel's approval, and as part of our PIO, Public Outreach for our charter review, part of what we explained to you probably a couple of months ago, was certain things that we had to do to get this information out with the counsel's permission. We would love to start sharing this information. I think that'd be a good place to start. At a town hall meeting, we can start sharing this red line and some of these ideas that they will be seeing. The whole purpose of the, again, the PIO, the public outreach is to make sure that people are engaged with the process and certainly with what we're trying to do. That being said, if counsel's okay with that, I would love to have that available for handout to anyone that is interested come Thursday.
What kind of handout?
Basically, just the red line here that we're talking about, the strike, underline strike. I mean, I don't know what else we could do rather than spend a lot of time explaining all this stuff, but it would certainly give them the ability to start digesting some of this and ask questions, so.
I might, I'm not saying I'm against it. I just, I'm not saying I'm against it. I just, and I'll defer to the rest of counsel, obviously, but would it not be better to wait until we actually had the questions drafted before we start?
If that's.
just, it, and I'll defer to the rest of counsel, obviously, but would it not be better to wait until we actually had the questions drafted, um, before we start?
If that's, uh, if that's society's suggestion.
The red line is out there.
It is?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's been downloaded and tha- that's the conversation, that was the instigator
of the conversations that people have had with me, is they'll hold it up and say, "Tell me about this," so, so it's out there.
It's a good idea, though.
Yeah. The only thing I would make sure is that-
The minute we generate something to send to you, it becomes public record anyway, so.
All right, so maybe, maybe it's a good idea to get, to get our view, to get the city's view on it, so.
Okay. We'll, we'll move forward with that then, if I'm seeing all heads. Okay, okay. Uh, we've got the, the Family Rec Center this Saturday, all-day Saturday. The summer signup program's going on. Be a lot of activity around there. If you've got children that you want to get into programs, now's the time to do it. Um, what time's that open, Carl?
Ten AM.
Ten AM. Um, uh, given to you this evening in front of, in front of each of you is, uh, a, a copy of an amendment one PowerPoint that was, uh, created by Florida League of Cities, um, that I got hold of, uh, this week, last week, I can't remember. Uh, that again is another just informative brochure, if you would, or PowerPoint that I would like to start handing out to the public. Uh, the public needs to be made aware of what this really means. I think Florida City, uh, League of Cities has done a good job of putting together some basic information. It's not, uh, it's not a lot of detail in it. It's, uh, it's very plain and simple. Uh, but again, this is another thing that, uh, I think we need to start providing to our residents so that they're well-informed, uh, come this November of what this really does. Cause it really, in nineteen, it's gonna impact us significantly, so. Um, again, with counsel's permission, uh, we'll put some together, we'll hand them out to Town Hall meeting, make them available to anybody that, uh, that cares to take one, so, okay?
Again, I just want to air my concern.
Okay.
I don't have a, necessarily have a problem with handing this out, saying it came from the League of Cities. Uh, my personal view is that the city, it's us as council members and the city as a whole, uh, should not be telling our citizens how to vote. Um, I have no problem informing them about what we think some of the, um, upside and downside of any individual ordinance or whatever it may be, but I don't think it's our job to tell our citizens how to vote. As long as we keep it informative in nature and not tell them that, to vote against it or to vote for it, I'm all in favor of it. I just don't think that we should, it's our position to, you wield our power, so to speak, to, uh, to tell any individual citizens or group of citizens how we think they should vote.
Um, Mr. Pogorlitch, I totally agree with you. We'll make sure, we'll review the document and make sure there's not a opinion of sort in there.
Okay.
Um, but I looked at it real quick for our bank copies. I didn't see anything, but I'll double-check.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Mr. Ross had asked about a month ago about the bus stop at, uh, front of McDonald's. Uh, you'll be pleased to know that the CEO of Hart has taken this into his hands personally.
Oh, wow.
Um, after our meeting, he said he was going down to have lunch at McDonald's. So, we asked that he, uh, take a look at, uh, fixing that problem down there. I have not, not heard back from him, but it's in capable hands. Okay. Um, the CRA, we've got a CRA meeting next Monday. Uh, we're actually doing a field trip tomorrow, um, to go look at a property, um, a developer's property that, uh, we're gonna propose, uh, um, he's gonna come back here, May first, and propose, uh, uh, development, so.
You said Monday?
I'm sorry?
You said Monday?
What's that, Monday?
You said it's a CRA mon- meeting Monday.
No, 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 I'm sorry. May first.
May first, okay.
May first. Did I say Monday?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Damn, why don't you let me do that?
Everybody in panic, man.
Uh, no, not Monday.
It'll be a four-minute-
No. I may be the only one there, huh? Um, I'm sorry, May first, we have a CRA meeting. Uh, we will bring you up to speed with, um, this developer that, uh, has previously proposed something to us. Uh, you guys had, uh, sent, uh, Mr. Berman and myself back to them to talk, uh, talk to, uh, the proposed development and certain conditions. Uh, hopefully, the field trip tomorrow will answer some of those, but we have had direct conversation with them concerning some of counsel's concerns, as well as the public's concerns. Um, they're back here trying to present, uh, their project in a reduced scale. Um, I think that, um, all your answers will be, um, positive, so. Um, to give you just a brief update, we are continuing a conversation with Paragon. Far as I know, Paragon is moving forward. He has not given me any indication that he's not. Uh, there's been some conversations between our attorney and their attorney, uh, about contracts and closing, so it appears as if we're moving forward. He has provided to us a very preliminary, um, very preliminary, uh, uh, site plan, if you would, of what he's gonna start off with down there and it's pretty exciting. And, um, um, he's got a milestone coming up here in May. Um, he is quickly approaching the due diligence period, is coming to a close, so. He's asked for some stuff, we have provided him some stuff, some information, so. Good, positive news. Hopefully, we can break ground here and get moving, so. Um, with that, Madam Mayor, I don't know that I've got anything else.
You want us here tomorrow at nine-thirty?
I'm sorry?
You, you want counsel at nine-thirty or are you just gonna give us the address and are we meeting?
Um, well, I, uh, the trip for tomorrow morning, you're talking, the trip down there's gotten very complicated because I thought some people were driving themselves and we didn't, we canceled the van because I thought we only had three people that were coming together. Um, so, we're meeting here at nine o'clock in the morning. I'm going to send, um, I will double-check on the address, I will send everybody an address. Um, and if you're not here at nine o'clock to go caravan down there or ride with us, I don't believe Mr. Pogorlitch is not gonna be, be able to make it, but she expressed to me-
I'm familiar with the property already, so.
Okay. Um, but we'll leave here at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, it shouldn't take that long. We were hoping to visit two, uh, two different sites downtown. Um, I will tell you that Alliance Group that had proposed the mid-rise down at the property on Area C has withdrawn their, their offer. Um, I found out about that on Saturday. And we're trying to, we're trying to decipher why, so.
Thank you. Is there any further business to come before this counsel? We will stand adjourned. Thank you all.